Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board meeting Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by a local access programming. Is there anyone here in the honest height that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none. There being none, please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First item on our agenda tonight is applicant Auburn Water District requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.4.3 of the Auburn zoning by law for a water treatment facility at 9A Pine Valley Drive, Auburn, Mass. 01501 MAP 63 parcel 23. Is there anyone representing the Water District? If you can do it here.
Good evening, Greg Woods with the Auburn Water District and Mike Karmastein from Comprehensive Environmental. We are here to, as you said, begin the approval process for the construction of a water treatment facility at 9A Pine Valley, which we can refer to as our South Street Station. Back in April of 2021, we had arsenic detections in that source that required it to be taken offline. So we began considering the treatment process for that. There's also PFOS, the forever chemicals, in that site, which while below the Massachusetts standards, will be above the newly promulgated federal standards for those forever chemicals. So it's going to be a combined arsenic and PFOS removal facility at the location of our existing pump station. So that's the general overview. I'll let Mike get into any of the details or be able to answer any of your questions.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Being none, does anybody on the board have any questions?
Just how many homes are affected by the wells up South Street there?
South Street Source is not a very large source. We pump maybe 400 gallons a minute out. So that's on the low pressure side of the system where we have Walsh Avenue and Southbridge Street Court and South Streets. We've got three sources that are all combining for that, for all the residents on the low pressure side. So it does pump out, goes to the tanks where it gets mixed and goes back out. So it's tough to say exactly the extent of where the water goes. If you're pumping at midnight, the water probably goes right up to the tank. If it's seven in the morning, people are taking showers, it might not even make it out to Route 20 based on the number of houses and the way the water goes preferentially through the water mains based on-
So it's not any specific amount of houses that those wells supply?
No, it goes into the network of pipes, the distribution system, and depending on demand, it will go to wherever the demand is.
Level 600, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a great source, it's not a big source, but it'll, we're proposing to put in the green sand filtration, which we currently have at our West Street facility, our Walsh Avenue and our Southbridge Street. So it's the same technology, but we will be adding granular activated carbon to remove the PFOS at this facility. Due to the new federal regulations, we will be adding that treatment process to our other facilities in the coming years, next two years. So this is kind of our first PFOS removal facility for the district to meet those new federal demands.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Do your other facilities also have this technology that you're going to be using on South Street?
Correct. The green sand, the typical vessels that we use to remove iron and manganese, it also works to remove the arsenic. So we will be using that same technology at the South Street site. So there's really nothing new. The granular activated carbon for the PFOS removal is the standard, industry standard for removing that chemical, and that's the same technology that we will be installing around the rest of the-
What's that other word you're using?
PFOS? That's the, those are the forever chemicals that you hear about from Teflon, 3M and DuPont. It's basically, it's in the groundwater around the country.
So it's a manufacturing byproduct that can travel through the groundwater?
So it's prevalent around the country. Up to this point, it's mostly been states having their own regulations. Massachusetts had six chemicals and they couldn't total more than 20 parts per trillion. That's a T, parts per trillion, very, very low concentrations is the standard. And then the federal government just came in and made a much lower, four parts per trillion is the standard. So almost all of our wells exceed that level, so we're going to have to do treatment on all of our wells across town.
Are you kind of doing this as a test facility to figure out if the treatment method you have a plan for work at the rest of the wells?
Oh, no, it's again, it's proven technology. The green sand to remove the arsenic, that's been done for decades, so we know that's going to work. And then the GAC, that's short for the granular activated carbon. That's an industry-known standard for, it's very, very middle of the road, it's not, it's not new technology. It's just going to be new for our town and our new operators because we have never had the need for it before.
The district's piloted for the green sand media and the GAC. So they completed a pilot report, I believe, in, it's probably been two years now?
Correct.
One more question, Mr. Chairman. As far as the increase in arsenic, how do you, how do you, I mean, what has caused the-
We don't know. That was, again, it was a big shock to the district because that, we have to test, the state gives us a full range of chemicals that we have to test throughout the year at various intervals, and arsenic is one of them. And that well has been tested for arsenic since it went online in the eighties with little to zero detections. And then all of a sudden, within a year, it came up to, to above the maximum contaminant level. Why? We don't know. Basically arsenic around here comes from the bedrock, and if it's in the water, it's in the water. But there, at that source, we had non-detects for many, many years, and then it came up to the point where it was above the MCL and we are required to do the treatment.
Figure it's like, or why do you take from the area eventually? The water from the bedrock's going to come up and you're finally going to get the arsenic. It's just replenishing itself.
Okay.
Couple of questions. On page C3, you have a grate, right next, looks like the stone area. It's an HTPE grate. Shows a six-inch PVC line there as well. I was wondering if that was ever going to be run over by a vehicle over H20 loading.
The pipe that goes down to the retention pond?
Yep.
No, really, the plan is, there's a loading dock, and all this is going to be crushed gravel around the southern side. So the loading dock would be for any type of chemical delivery backed right in, but there's no expectation for-
Is there a curb around this at all, or to prevent somebody from driving over it?
This is just a swale, right here, just to collect runoff from the roof.
What's the buried depth for this, for this line?
The buried depth here-
The concern would be whether if we tore over this, that would get crushed.
It's about a foot, foot and a half, shown right here.
Based on the elevations, it's not going to be buried very deep for it.
It'll be, it'll be shallow, it's six-inch PVC.
I don't think it'll freeze anywhere.
It should, it's sloped to drain.
Yeah. You know, sometimes you get freezing rain, you think everything's hunk and dure, and all of a sudden, temperature drops. If you're a foot deep, everything freezes.
Correct.
That better be my only concern. And then, the next page, you have a sewer manhole that's on the system, and it's got a, one invert a 539, another invert a 536, which is over a two-and-a-half-foot drop. Is that just going to be a sloped invert? Is that going to be a drop, inside drop connection?
That's an inside drop connection. And you have force main coming in at that 539, and then it'll drop down, and then it'll transition to gravity at 536.4.
So it's, it's an open end at the end of the force main, right?
Yeah, it's an open drop.
You have a sloped line going down to the other invert, is the sloped invert. What's going to prevent the other side of the, it's going to be a concrete manhole, I assume?
Yep.
It's a sewer line, what's going to happen with the hydrogen sulfide eating the concrete? That'll happen with the force main, because you're always churning up H2S all the time when you're pumping.
The, the, repeat that, sorry?
No, when you're pumping through your force main, and it goes into a concrete manhole that aerates, and it creates H2S in the manhole. So I'm worried about the manhole eventually, not this year, not next year, five years from now, 10 years from now, that other side of the manhole will be gone.
So most of this pumping system is going to be related to our backwash, not, not waste. There will be a bathroom in here, but the volume of water that's, waste that's being pumped through the force main is for discharging the backwash water to the sewer system, much like we do at West Street. So underneath the center third of this building is going to be a huge backwash basin. So when these vessels backwash, it goes in. So I forget what the volume of water's going to be per backwash, but the whole point of the force main is to pump backwashed water with iron and manganese up the hill into our catch basin, and then it'll grab into the sewer system.
Is it, are any of these backwash chemicals, do they produce any eroding-type gas materials?
No, it's just round, it's raw groundwater.
Yeah, but it has, if it's backwash, it's got PFAS in it, it's got arsenic in it, it's got whatever-
There'll be arsenic in it, no PFOS, the PFOS will be trapped in the media.
So you're putting the PFOS for the carbon media, right?
Correct.
So in order to get rid of the PFOS, you're just going to remove the carbon media, or do you backwash the carbon media?
We backwash the carbon media, but-
So that's going to go out in the line?
PFOS will stay in the, in the carbon.
It attaches to carbon?
Correct.
So-
The arsenic does not, it'll, it'll wash out, and we have some test data.
So lifespan of that carbon material?
It fluctuates based on water quality.
Concentration.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and concentration. So predicting a year at least, plus, safely.
So you'll change the carbon material every year?
Correct, yeah.
How expensive is that? Isn't, I know carbon's not cheap.
No, it's not cheap.
Nothing's cheap today. One of the things I did notice is you're doing your disinfection of the water main with chlorine gas. Is there any alternative besides, chlorine gas is dangerous. It's very dangerous, especially in cylinders. If somebody doesn't pay attention, you know, it can happen. Plus, if you get a little leak and no one's around, it's going to corrode everything in the building, anything brass is gone.
We, we currently use chlorine gas at all of our, our facilities and have. So we do have all the appropriate safety measures and alarming for the use of that. It's, you know, it's, it's very regulated chemical.
You have an exterior alarm as well as an interior alarm on the station?
Yes, oh yeah, there's a light.
So the neighborhood knows if there's a chlorine gas leak?
Yeah, it's in a, it's in a isolated room, and there's a chlorine gas detector in that room.
Right, but what prevents that gas from getting out of that room if you have a leak and no one's around?
The alarm will go off, someone will be there, emergency response will come back. But yes, if we have a leaking cylinder, it will leak until the cylinder is, is-
Is there a program or something you follow if it gets out of hand? You know, the green cloud comes out of the building, floats across the neighborhood, what do you do for the neighbors?
Correct, there would be a whole emergency response, reverse 911, a whole, it'd be a regional problem, it's nothing that, that we, we're going to go down there with fans and try to disperse.
Oh, no, I know.
It's a major response. But yeah, there are all the, the DEP, there's, there's a number of criteria that we have to meet for monitoring and alarming for, just for that.
Sheet C6 in your site details, just got a couple of questions.
C6?
I don't, yeah, I don't have the specs, so I don't know what the specs say, that's why I'm asking the question. I only get the plans. In your trench detail, it says refer to the bedding requirements specified in section 02220 under earthwork. So I don't know what, what type of pipe that is. I'm assuming that's for every type of, type of pipe you're bearing, the HDP, the PVC, the DI.
Yeah, that's a typical trench detail for-
You don't tell what the material is. So I don't know if it's crushed on another pipe and sand on top, or just common borrow on both.
That's detailed in the specs, in our, in our earthworks section of the specs.
Is it different for every type of pipe? Let you know the contract will jump all over that if it's not really specified out in the spec.
Mm-hmm. I think it would help to have a cross-section for the force main, so we can, we can add that. This is for duct, it goes with the detail next to it, for ductile iron.
Over the, uh-
For the water main.
The one on the left?
Yeah.
I noticed that on that detail, it looks like they're all mechanical joints, correct? For your pipe T, if you DI. But you don't specify megalogs there, but you do on your hydrant, you specify thrust blocks on those, but you don't specify a thrust block on the hydrant. I know it's belted and suspenders, but he's going to tell you what's going to happen if somebody doesn't open that hydrant all the way. It'll blow off.
We can make those adjustments.
Yeah.
And then on the grinder pump, I assume it's like an E1 unit? Is that anywhere in the travelway? Is that off in the grass area?
It's going to be for that, where the detention pond is, we were talking about that pipe that goes to the, it's going to be off on the left.
So it's going to be off the traveled road?
Correct, oh yeah, yep, on the side of the building. So if you go back to C4, it's going to be on the very southern side of that, of the fenced area, out of the traffic pattern.
It's right, right next to the propane tank. There's a generator propane tank and grinder station. Because the bathroom is on that side of the building.
Think I can remember the rest of my questions. I looked at the lighting detail, not the detail, but the overall. What type of lights you're putting in, fluorescent or LED? Please tell me they're LED.
LED throughout the building, yeah.
Good.
Not metal halide, not fluorescent.
So much cheaper to run.
They're cheap and, yeah, efficient.
Yeah, very efficient. What type of heat do you, I know you have two propane tanks outside, I assume that's for the heat.
Correct, correct.
So that's all the heat?
Correct.
Like, look like an EHU electric heating unit in the, on the layout for the heating?
Were there electric heaters in the electric room?
Yeah, in some, in some small rooms.
The small rooms are electric, but the, but the main floor has two gas, gas units for the, for the big area.
Yeah, it's more efficient to have the small units.
Glycol going through the system so it doesn't freeze, because you have a cooling, in your plan it shows a cooling liquid. Glycol does both, it heats and cools. But I don't know if you're using that for AC and for the heat, or you-
That's just for the control room, just to moderate temperature. We have a split system. I think that's what you're referring to in the-
Well, you have like three systems in here, one for the small room that's electric heater, that's just one goes in the corner on the wall, blows down, and the rest is all going to be air handling units, correct? Pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, yeah, propane heaters in the main, because it's a large area, especially with the height of the building. We put the bigger units in that, in that room, because it's just a large space.
Is there AC in this building too?
Just the, just the lab, just the lab has a mini split for, for air conditioning.
My only other question was, why a single roof? Why not a metal roof? You never have to worry about it again, it's done. I'm a repair, so every month, every dime they spend, I get charged. And I just got my water bill, so.
Did we look at metal roof from a cost perspective?
Asphalt's probably cheaper up front. Pay me now or pay me later. The metal roof will be good long after, we're all going. If it's a decent metal roof. Going to be the raised seam. And I looked on Google, well, Google Maps, and tried to find where this was on that road, and I could not find an entrance going down the street.
So at the end of Pine Valley, it's just a driveway between eight and nine, that's why it's labeled 9A. So it's just a gravel driveway that goes down through the pine trees and pops out down near the railroad. And that's where the current pump station is. You'll see a little green, lime green building, and to the south of that is where we're proposing to-
So when the new one's built, the old one's going to be demoed?
No, because the well eight is inside that building, well seven is, is remote. So that building actually contains one of the wells. So that building will be, will be, we'll keep that building, gut out anything that we don't need, move that, that into the new building, but the existing building will stay.
Just curious. Anybody else have any other questions? This is out for peer review, so we have to wait for that.
Okay. Well, thank you for looking, it's nice to see that, you know, you read through it and picked some things up.
You may have a motion to continue this, when's our next meeting?
January 14th.
May I have a motion to continue this to our January 4th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Ring, it's an aye, it is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
I'll talk to you then.
Next on the agenda is applicant Mass Futures LLC requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning by law for 21 two-family dwelling condo development at 25 Vinyl Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501 MAP 10 parcel 78. They have requested a continuance to our next meeting. May I have a motion to continue this to our January 14th meeting?
Summled.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Ring, it's an aye, it is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant CMS LLC care of Henry Risenkoff requesting a special permit to site plan approval under section 3.2.5.3 of the Auburn zoning by law for a coffee shop and other site improvements at 602 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501 MAP 56 parcel 148. This has been continued and continued and continued, the last continuous was our November 12th meeting. So anyone here representing CMS LLC, please go to the podium.
Good evening, Henry Resnickoff, I represent CMS LLC, I'm the applicant. I'd like to recap where we are and what we're asking for. The project consists at 602 Southbridge Street, which is where Oxford and Southbridge come together, obviously. We're asking the commission to approve a 2,400 square foot freestanding coffee shop with drive-up. There was a zoning determination letter dated October 23rd, '23 that confirmed that it's zoned highway business. We're applying under sections 3.2.5.3 and 3.9.2.2 for site plan approval and special use permit. We presented the commission on April 9th and August 13th. Originally, at the first meeting, the commission asked for a civil engineering peer review that was conducted by Graves Engineering. It was completed and complied with all suggestions. Everything they asked for is on the submission set that you have in front of you. At the August meeting, the commission asked for a traffic peer review. It was sent to VHB of Worcester, Mass. All comments that they marked are resolved. There were two specific ones I just wanted to highlight. One of them was to ask to have a crosswalk built across Oxford Street, it's on the plan that was submitted to you tonight. They also asked to have a post-monitoring program to make sure the projections that were in the peer review are complied with. The details of that are also in the VHB report and our submission to you. That was all part of the plan that was submitted to you. We also submitted, and I don't know if it got distributed or not, a contract to do the monitoring program, and we will pay for it, obviously. The details will be finalized with DPW and the planning department. To date, permits issued for this project include conservation, zoning board of appeals, which is for the Aqua Vert area, Mass dot issuing that it does not require a permit. All the town agencies have reviewed, and all the code comments were complied with and all are reflected on the plans that you have. Changes to the site, we would like to raise the existing building. Obviously, we do the parking lot as a new parking lot, greatly reduced in size. Right now, if you've been out there, as you know, it's all blacktop. We'll be cutting that practically in half and installing a great deal of landscaping. We're putting new pavement, downcast LED sight lighting, landscaping, and the state has asked us to also include the corner, they own that little funny corner right where Oxford and Southbridge come together that sort of uses a parking lot. They asked us to please take the blacktop up and plant that also. We said yes. The plans reflect a stormwater management code to system. There is no current stormwater plan existing on that site today. The plans include a pylon, there will be no gas on the site. We plan to install some sidewalk sections on Oxford Street, which are shown on the plan. Install the crosswalk on Oxford Street as proposed. Considerably reduce impervious surface and construct a new facility. Our request tonight is to close the public hearing and ask for you to grant the application based on the submissions, the civil peer review, and the traffic peer review.
Obviously, there's no one in the audience who's going to ask any questions, so anybody here on the board have any questions? Glenn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one concern as far as an increase in traffic. If you do happen to change your plans and advertise on billboards on either Route 90 or 290, I know you say here that you have no plans to do that kind of, you know, sign installation, but I see, I see signs like that everywhere. Easy on, easy off, exit 90, and that's a major concern as far as I'm concerned with even more traffic being generated.
As part of VHB's comments, we concurred with that, that that would not be done. So that would be a condition of approval.
Any other questions, Glenn? All set, right, Glenn?
I'm all set, thank you.
My concerns are the traffic coming south on Route 12, coming up and swinging, and then the traffic that's coming north on Route 12, we're going to go left down Oxford Street. You've got the one opening, it's real close to the intersection, and then you're going to have whatever other traffic is on Oxford Street going either way. And we know what it's like in the busier times, of which there are several during the year in town, and it, it just doesn't seem like it'll be worked. It'll work or cars will come down. Cars come down Oxford Street heading north, and they're moving. They're going 45, 55 miles an hour. It doesn't matter what the speed limit is, but they're moving. And not everybody, but a lot of them. And just all the conflicting driveways. I read the report too, but I didn't concur.
To comment on that, VH, Chappelle Engineering, who did our traffic study, provided information on those very issues. VHB sent two sets of comments on those and concurred that all those possibilities were addressed and resolved. The average speed actually is around 25 most of the time on that street according to both traffic engineers.
Which street?
On Oxford Street. According, according to the traffic engineers. Now, I'm not saying, that's what, it's right in the report.
That's why I'm not listening to what they said.
Well, you asked to have the traffic report peer reviewed, it was extensively peer reviewed, and every comment was responded to and agreed to and marked resolved by your peer reviewer.
Yeah, no, well, that, that, their peer reviewers, and they might think so, but I don't. I don't agree with it. I didn't agree with a lot I saw in the report. I know what I see, I've lived here all my life. I know what I see, I've lived here all my life.
So, Ron?
Yeah.
Jason?
I have no questions.
No questions? I know it stated that, you know, there are no plans to advertise on 290 of the Mass bike. That's today, five years from now, the signs are going up and you can't tell me it's not going to happen. Now, I'm looking at the response here and it says weekday AM peak hour, existing traffic is 497 vehicles. Bros coffee shop traffic, 159, that comes up to 656 vehicles. That's a lot more added to the traffic. And then you do weekday PM peak hour, you're adding 74 vehicles, which brings up to 736. Then you go to Saturday midday peak hour and you're going to have 903 vehicles. You can do all the traffic studies you want. When you do one the week of Thanksgiving, the week of Christmas, the week of Memorial Day, pick a Wednesday any any weekend, do it. I, last week, traffic was backed up from Southbridge Street all the way to the skating rink. Southbridge Street was backed up all the way past Webster First. So you can't tell me that this isn't going to create a traffic nightmare. The accidents, there was no study on pedestrian accidents, but there's been a lot of accidents down there in that intersection. I just don't think it's a good fit for that lot. And I know the arguments could be, well, there's a restaurant there now, well, people go down and sit for an hour and they dribble in and they dribble out. This is high paced, you got to make your money, the cars got to go through, the cars got to go through, the cars got to go through. So you're probably your your whole time at the window is less than three minutes. Time to order, you have the cars in front of you and you have, by the time you get to the window, it's at least three minutes and they're coming out that fast. That's fast, that's real fast. And now you got people coming out that want to make a left on Oxford Street. You got people come down the street that want to make a left into the place, that's a traffic nightmare. And we have a backup, either the people from Starbucks, which is what it is, they're going to try to force their way in, it's going to create a backup like you never never saw before over there, it's bad enough now.
And it's one of the main access routes for the police to exit the police station.
It is, it's right there.
Where they're going to go.
Yeah.
Getting back doesn't really matter as much, but it's the main route that, one of the main ways that they go.
Well, not only that, but in the morning, peak hour, what goes through him more than anything? School buses. How are we going to maintain the traffic for the school buses to get through to get to the kids? Pick up the kids and get them to school on time? You can't guarantee me that's going to happen, it's not. I I just don't think it's a good fit, I really don't, for the town.
May I comment?
Sure.
On the signage as a condition, if you make it a condition of approval, that goes with the user. So they can't change it if it's a condition of approval of the permit?
That that just exacerbates the situation if you put signs up. If we don't have no signs, it's still a problem, it's a.
You know what I'm saying, if you make a condition of no signage on 290 or 90.
What I'm saying is even if you don't put the signs up, that only exacerbates the situation we already have at that intersection without a Starbucks. The the problem at the intersection now is bad enough. I mean, when you come down Oxford Street and you stop at the light, when the green arrow goes right, you can't see it because it's above your head. I don't care what vehicle you're driving in, unless you're four or five cars back and everybody starts honking their horn at the front guy because he's waiting for the cars to come from his left or from his right.
And to that point, Mr. Chairman, that's why VHB suggested a monitoring program post CO.
That's too late, it's too late, Starbucks is built, traffic's there, I don't care what you say afterwards, it's too late. I know what they said, I read the report. If you do a monitoring program after the fact, right? It's, it makes no sense. Because you're not going to come through.
The sense of it is.
Intersection, you're not going to come through and pay for the state to put new lights there, you're not going to come through and widen.
Actually, what the what the state said to both VHB and to our guys is do the, if you do the post monitoring program and we need to tweak the light system, they would do that. We would, we would be paying for the information.
The light system is.
Those are the words they used, I'm not, I'm not, those aren't my words, those are their words. That's VHB's words.
Well, I'm telling you what tweaking the light system means, it's it's timing. How long the light stays red and before it turns green?
Yeah.
That's all it is. They're not going to do anything with the light system, and the intersection is bad enough as it is. I I just don't, I don't care for the whole setup, I just don't. It's close to the exit coming off of 290. It's 200 feet or less from Southbridge Street. But like Ron said, you got the police traffic trying to get out, they're trying to get down that way if they had to go out of emergency on Southbridge Street. If it's in peak hour, they're not getting through and neither is the ambulance. If they got to come from the center of town, they're not going to get there if all of our Route 12 is backed up because of this. I mean, if if you drive through Auburn at any peak hour down by Dunkin' Donuts in the center of town by the Shell Station, that, they have plenty of queue, but it goes right up around, right down the road, the side road they're on, right down Route 12, and it's a nightmare. Because now they've taken up half the lane of the travel line, one of them. It's it's an absolute nightmare. Oh.
I mean, I see the committee's frustration, this guy's been coming here for a year.
Yeah.
Is there a solution, like, can we come up with a solution as to what we want to see?
Yeah, nothing. That's my personal opinion.
Or the Bentley type thing.
Yeah, that's fine, because the traffic dribbles in, dribbles out. So may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Nay.
Me, aye, it is a vote, it goes through. Now, on the vote on a special permit, may I have a motion to approve the special permit? Being none, may I have a motion to not approve the special permit?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Nay.
Me, John Reagan, it is a vote. So if the special permit doesn't fly, neither does the site plan.
You vote on the site plan?
What's that?
You vote on the site plan?
Yeah, we will. So may I have a motion to approve the site plan?
I move to approve the site plan.
May I have a second? Being none, may I have a motion to not approve the site plan?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of saying nay on the on the site plan?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
It is a vote, doesn't pass, sorry. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes of 11:20, 11:12, 2024. May I have a motion to approve these minutes as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, Johnny, it is a vote. There's no one for seeing business by me, is there a member, town plan or update?
I think you all got email or this week, the employee and volunteer appreciation is Thursday, if you want to come and get lunch. Sandwiches and snacks from Bay Path, 12, 12 to 12.
This here, there?
Yeah.
Sure? Sure? When is what?
For.
For what?
I'll I'll write up a decision tomorrow and I'll have to sign it at the next meeting, so. It's next month.
Our our decision will be signed in January, January.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, Johnny, it is a vote, the meeting is now adjourned.